Alderman Seaver. Alderman Headley. Alderman Stratton. Alderman Totten. Alderman West.
Okay, the next item is the invocation led by Jason Way with the Valley Community Church, followed by pledges allegiance from Alderman back.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. God, your word said that we should pray for those leaders that govern over us. God, we pray right now, God, for the leaders of our community. God, I thank you for wisdom. God, pray that you would help them in the decision-making process and all the things that they have to do. God, we also pray for their families, God. Uh, Lord, we know that it can be difficult sometimes, and so, God, we just pray right now that your blessing would be upon them as well. God, pray for this meeting today, that everything would go well, smooth. God, that you would, uh, help us to continue to move forward as a community. God, we trust what you're doing. God, we trust our leaders that are helping us get there. God, we just thank you for all that you're going to do. God, we give you praise, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag, that is behind the states of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whom we live, created and made for all.
Uh, before we move on to the approval of the agenda, in case anyone is wondering, because Sarah wants me to say so, I was gonna surprise everybody, but we do have a camera in the back tonight, and they are shooting footage for the upcoming State of the City address. So no fear that there's not a new reality show coming soon, or anything like that. So you may be on that, I guess. I don't know. We'll see. Hopefully they can break up my wonderful part of it. Alright. Uh, next item is approval, approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
See, no changes, see no proclamations, then move on to citizens' participation. This time, it says time for citizens to address the board. You come forward to the, uh, put your microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Robert Delaet, D.E.L.A.E.T. My daughter lives at twelve ninety-four Northwest Phelps Drive, Green Valley.
It just kinda, you can, you can just kinda tell, just tell us, kinda tell us what's going on. I know you showed several of us the videos and pictures, I think. And Alderman Headley's been out there.
There's a drains problem at my daughter's place. Uh, there's five storm drains that are dumping into her backyard. And it's flooding it, and there's a pond above her property that could give way. If it does, it's gonna take out her townhouse. And if she's in it... So we need to see about, uh, connecting the pipe. I was told it costs a thousand dollars, connect that twenty-eight inch pipe to the storm drain. There will be no flooding, and there's a, uh, field next to the pond. This is the pond, all in blue. They could take a Bobcat, whatever, make it go over this way, and drain into this here, uh, field over here. Here's your five storm drains, and there's one inside the pond. They all dump into my daughter's backyard. That is not a...
So this, right here is what you were showing us running down, right here, okay?
And water runs down through here, too.
And this all, is this always holding quite a bit of water in there?
When it rains, it's all from this business. This is all, uh, killed. It's all sloping down. So all that water's coming, coming down. Just think of the water that filled that pond up. From that one business, so you got all these businesses that are dumping into these storm drains. They're going into her backyard. They have seen it go through. And if this, if, uh, Patrick Martin did not come out when he did, 'cause this was all clogged up, this pond would've been down here. It would've been just the same, 'cause you got four storm drains that have been down here. That water would've been down here. It would've flooded all these here four townhouses. It's a storm drain problem. It's not a flooding issue. So you got, the city would have to get everything. Finances, sheet rock, flooring, whatever you can think of. If that damn, uh, this here levee gives way, which Ken Murphy says is not gonna go away, and Ken Murphy said, uh, that this here drains problem is correct. It's an incomplete sewer system. You don't dump four city drains into someone's backyard. It's a health and safety issue. There's a baby, a seven-month-old baby living right after, and just think of these floods. All of it. Perfect. Everything is going to be replaced, and the city will have to even put these people up. So mine...
I was just showing Mayor, Spanish, girl, that.
So if they pick a bulldozer, and kind of, this is the field. Make that pond go over here, then we don't have to worry about it giving way. Take the twenty-eight inch pipe, tie it into the other one. We don't have a problem. I asked for how much you guys had already spent. I haven't gotten an answer yet. I have told people, the business that I work at, I told them they're losing sixty thousand dollars a month to fix the problem.
I mean, is that, I guess it's designed all, designed all properly in there, I mean?
So I marked in where that pond, and I got the...
Yeah, no, I got you. I was just, I was trying to get the, getting the...
So they put them in, or just water just flowed through there, then?
It just flowed.
Is that actually what they put in there?
That's what he's showing you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the discharge.
Yeah, for four sewer drains and a drain that's in that pond. I got pictures on my laptop where, where it wasn't repaired. Ken Murphy said it was fine. But luckily Patrick Martin came out and dug the trench, and, uh, Bob Headley came out Memorial Weekend. Bob Headley came out Memorial Weekend on his day off. Came right over, went in, saw, "What the heck is this?" He couldn't believe it. And there was rocks all the way up, okay, this is the front side. This was all covered up, and two sides were all covered up. And he mentioned, "Oh, you wanna clean this out?" And I said, "No," but we ended up doing it, and he should, he saw me pick that rock up, took a picture of it. How much water it would take to force that rock down? My suggestion? Fix it the right way, dig your hole, connect the twenty-eight inches pipes together. Won't be flooding. Move that, take care of that pond. Don't have to worry about someone getting killed.
I know Patrick, one of the reasons Patrick Martin went out was to take a look at the, at what we had and try to find some solution to the issue at the time.
And I praised him, 'cause I talked to him. He was right out there, and within a week, he was digging on it. He had all marketing, all free utilities, everything, and he is out there. And I praise, uh, Bob, uh, Headley. He came right out there, and, uh, that night, he was calling everybody, texting me, keeping me informed, so he's great. Ken Murphy, I disagree with him, 'cause he was saying, "Oh, that's a finished job."
In his defense, he goes back and he looks at the plot plans and, uh, tries to identify what's been taken care of. So I don't think that he tried to tell you wrong, or that he's trying to blow you off, 'cause, trust me, I've, I've heard reports from Mr. Murphy about it. And we've all kind of been trying to find a solution for the issue out there, so we, obviously sounds like there's still an issue that needs to be resolved. Or at least the mayor wants us to, to look into it some more and see if there's more that we can do, and I'm happy to do that.
A city official was out there, and they said that twenty-eight inch pipe connected, I mean, the pipe would cost a thousand dollars. Her AC was thirty-five, so that would be really different cover, 'cause if it floods, uh, it's gonna take it out and see. Okay.
Can you see it?
Go down here.
Oh, the field.
The pond. Bring it up.
That's the flow of the view.
There's a power box.
That's there? Right near it, it's flooding?
Well, if it floods all the way up into this here driveway, then that's an electrical box.
That's wild.
I got pictures of it.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, do you want us to?
Yeah, let's do it.
Go out and take a look at it?
What more we can do?
Continue to try and work something out on this.
Kids can't go back to their place? And if they get hurt, that's city property. How many doctor bills? We'll pay for that.
Very good. Yeah, we'll go out and take a look at it. Get out there and see what more we can do.
My question is, dig in the trench, connect in the two parts, take care of that pond. Your word said.
Well, we'll get on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Uh, who approved the, uh, drainage pipe?
You know, without looking at records, to be honest with you, 'cause, uh, yeah, it would've been an engineer that did the site plan, yeah.
Whoever the developer had, did the plan, their engineer.
Do you know the developer?
I do not know who did that. I mean, that's been in there for, I've been here for thirteen years, and it was a year well before that, so I don't know.
Quite a while ago.
So, okay. You're not okay with that drainage? Uh, do you know when the last time that levee was trapped?
Mike, we're not, uh, Mayor, this is, it's private property, sir, but...
The pot, yeah, the, the pot would be on private property, so we wouldn't be able to do anything with it.
Now, if it's an issue, should you go get a, probably individual, or you make sure, so there is no life in that issue?
Yeah, I don't know what.
I, I think that's what we're gonna, that's part of what the mayor's agreement with you is, is that we'll look into creative ways to try and solve this, this issue, come up with a solution.
If that water, that levee gives way, and she comes, that's gonna hit that bottom corner, it's gonna take out the top floor with it.
Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have anyone else who wishes to address the board this evening? Alright. Seeing none, move on to the consistent agenda. Uh, Book, Alderman West, approve the consistent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. Also, same time. Seeing no previous business, move on to new business, Frank Street Properties.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, really what we wanted to do by placing this item on the agenda was just raise kind of an awareness of the Nichols Building that the city, uh, owns. As you guys are all aware, we've, uh, leased out units, uh, A and C, or, I'm sorry, B and C to the Green Valley Assistance Council. Uh, we are left over with unit A and then the larger building. And I know that there's been some discussion from the Green Valley Youth Engagement Services Program about perhaps having, uh, some sort of senior center or a mixed-use activity center where seniors and youth are able to get together and, um, uh, work on projects, uh, provide senior meals, that sort of thing. So the idea about putting this on the agenda tonight was hopefully to, uh, Mr. Mayor, get some, you know, traction from the board and try to get, get an idea, uh, from everybody as to what they would like to, to see staff proceed with, as a project down there.
What is happening there, I mean, the seniors will be meeting with the youth? Is that what you were saying?
Uh, well, we've tried to think of creative ways to bring seniors and the youth together, because they actually, even though it doesn't, at first was seem like a good fit, it actually, it's a really good fit. You know that.
I know.
Yeah, uh, the average Joe doesn't think that that's a good fit, and it really is kind of a synergistic fit, where you get the two together and they kind of come out of their shells. And, um, it, it seems to be a good way to, to, um, engage both the, the youth and the seniors in activities in the city, so...
What types of activities are you planning for the youth to be doing?
That's, that's all still up in the air.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, really, the major thing I wanted to see with it was, uh, not like a full-blown senior luncheon, but I would like us to be able to start offering, you know, senior meals like once or twice a week. And do that at, at that location, uh, once we, you know, got some rehab to it. And do more of that type of stuff during the day, and then at night, switch more to, uh, the youth activities. You know, then you have that, you know, time there, kind of right after school, that could be maybe more of your mixed activities. It could be simple as, you know, offering to, like, you know, seniors, offering tutoring to, you know,
Right.
young, younger kids and things like that. And then, you know, we can come up with some different activities that they'll like to do, but it'd be more of a mixed use and then coming together and doing things together as well.
You want me to tell you what happened? A friend of mine, her granddaughter was coming over, and her mom said, "You sure didn't have your homework done before you go over there." Well, she gets off the bus, and grandma goes, "Let's get your homework done." "Oh, I did it on the bus." She did it with her laptop thing, and then she did the homework. She just got the answers and put it in. Grandma sat her down and made her read everything and do it right. Okay.
So, you know, more of those types of things, I mean, I don't know. Hopefully we utilize a lot for the luncheons, you know, it could be something that, you know, we have somewhat in like price-type cafeteria, like to do with the Wheels on Wheels, or, you know, we've looked at possibly, you know, we'd like to put kitchen equipment in there, you know, finding some, you know, gently used, uh, kitchen equipment that we could, you know, place in there, and we can do some, some little cooking-like things.
Well, I can get with a few of the youth groups that are around. We have a couple of them. And, uh, I'll work with you. Have you talked to the school at all to see if they have any of those services covered, or are interested in partnering with...
Well, with our, with our Green Valley E S board, we actually have representatives in the school on there, so they're aware, you know, we're kind of all been working together to, to do this. And really, what we've been trying to do is try to create different grant opportunities, 'cause by doing youth and seniors, you have a larger, you know, pool of grants out there that we could get to help, you know, pay for a lot of this. But, yeah, I mean, we've, I mean, the school's been involved, and Dr. Welly's helped on that G S board with this, and they're all aware of what we're trying to do with the, you know, we've looked at things from being able to, uh, do, uh, you know, mental health counseling there and things like that, 'cause we need for that community, and there's not space for those types of things. So we've talked about being able to utilize part of that to bring in, you know, a counselor that the school district works with to do mental he- health counseling for families that need it, so, yeah, we've been talking about a lot of the seniors involved in the school and ourselves.
Like Futures Program, would that be tied more towards the Green Valley Assistant Council versus what you're talking about? Or have you guys considered, uh, you know, the options? I know they probably have a need for space, you know, things like stadiums, uh...
Yeah, I mean, that was, that, Tracis is a representative for Bright Futures. I don't, I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know if you guys have a regular need for space, uh, for events, or if... I mean, really, the only annual event that we, that you have is the annual breakfast.
Yeah, a lot of the needs that come up are kind of filled as needed, so sometimes, like, you know, after a couple of winters, and they'll get twelve of them instead, so it's like, it's all in need of some, but... I mean, needs certainly may come up.
Yeah, and to Alderman West's point earlier, we certainly don't want to duplicate efforts, uh, trying to be mindful of that as we go through this process. On the Green Valley E S Committee, we've, uh, like the mayor said, we've got Dr. Welly sits on that board, as well as the, the, uh, principal of the high school and several other staff members, so we, we try to, um, did I say that right?
Assistant principal?
Assistant principal, my, I'm sorry.
But you're like assistant middle school principal, or?
Yes. So we're trying to find out what the school district sees, not only what their events are, but we're asking them, what, what do you see are, as these unfilled needs up in the community? What do you see that's not being done that maybe we could partner on and help out with? So that's, that's been the idea up till now, as far as the Green Valley E S has gone.
Just wanting traction from us to make sure someone doesn't have a totally different...
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, I'd, I'd hate to put a lot of time and effort into, you know, in, uh, investigating, uh, senior centers or, you know, mixed, some sort of mixed use. Uh, it, really, the, the direction needs to come from the vision the board has for those buildings, rather than, you know, at, at a staff level. So that's, that's all I'm looking for tonight, to a little, a little direction, and if it's something that we need to think about and revisit, I'm happy with that, too. I just want to make sure that this is on the board's mind for, uh, for, you know, future programming.
I mean, I'll be kind of in, in the right direction, although, I mean, and it would still be, it would be used, I guess, for, you know, rentals for people and stuff like that as well. I mean, it wouldn't just be all...
Yeah, it's a, it's an event space.
Yeah.
The only problem with it right now is that it's just a, it's just, just a, a cinder block men, like, event space.
Open up the face, wide open face, yeah.
Yeah, needs, needs a little bit of TLC on the inside to make, to make it into an event space that would be attractive to rentals or, or anybody else, so...
I mean, we're kind of on the right track, the, excuse me, the new combined center, or?
I don't know, it's for the whole community, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we purchased the building for.
Yeah, right, that, oh, right there in your stopping ground, so...
I know. They know who I am.
Alright, we're kind of on the right track then?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Uh, seeing no new business, move on to presentation. Uh, first presentation is recognition of Hayden Ambrose, which time I'm playing zoning commission.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, just as Hayden is approaching and Mayor Todd is stepping down, uh, we do have a proclamation that we, we would like to read in honor of Hayden.
This is a proclamation of the City of Green Valley, Missouri. Whereas during the period of two thousand through two thousand nineteen, Mr. Hayden Ambrose has served the, on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Green Valley. And whereas Mr. Ambrose has been involved in multiple projects throughout the, through the greatest degree of growth the community has experienced. And whereas Mr. Ambrose was part of multiple recommendations to the Board of Aldermen for Platts, zoning changes, capital improvement plans, and future planning. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of, of Green Valley Board of Aldermen that I, Mayor Mike, that Mayor Mike Todd acknowledged the outstanding service of, of Mr. Hayden Ambrose to our community.
There's probably no way we could change all time, you know? It's gotta be like a five o'clock before you're there, so... Hey, you're not getting wood.
Okay.
That is Bart getting pictures. Oh, Mike, get over there.
Lots of pictures of you and Mike.
Because you have, you know, put up a picture, so...
I'm gonna go to my...
You know, when you, you've had all that five minutes away, too, you've had a little, little... Hey, next item is Oz's presentation, Trout Beeman and Company.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I'd like to ask, uh, Butch Beeman from, uh, Trout Beeman and Company to come forward and, uh, Stephen Craig and Kathy worked this year with, uh, their firm to complete the audit, and Butch is going to give you a, uh, summary of the, the twenty eighteen, the audit of the twenty eighteen financial documents of the city.
Yeah, we've, we've got a summary, right? Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Todd, uh, members of the Board of Aldermen. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Uh, I've heard they have the, the opportunity to audit the city's financial statements for the year end of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. One note of disappointment, I see the camera is gone, so...
Well, I know, no hard feelings, but...
I'll get mine out, I'll get mine out, Butch, here you go. Go ahead.
That's right. You've been presented or provided the, uh, the complete packet ahead of time. As you, you veterans know, there's no way we're gonna cover everything in here. You wouldn't want me to, I don't want to, that's not the purpose. I want to highlight some things, and certainly be responsive to questions that you may have. If I don't have the answer readily available tonight, um, I assure you that I will get the answer and send it back to Stephen, and then he can disseminate it as appropriate. Um, so, as Mr. Hunt said, uh, we absolutely appreciate the cooperation we had from Kathy, Mallory, the rest of the accounting department, as well as the administrative department, uh, when, when we did do interviews and assessments and so on. So we appreciate the cooperation, uh, from all of them, and we are looking forward to working with Stephen in this current year. On pages one through three, pages one through three, those are the independent auditor's report. Uh, independent audit report, excuse me. And a couple of things I want to show or, or set forth is that one of the paragraphs very early on, I believe it's on page one, talks about management responsibility. And a key thing to note, because a lot of people... Management responsibility for the financial statements. They're the City of Green Valley's financial statements, they're not our financial statements, certainly the city engaged us in the preparation of them, but, uh, they reviewed a draft, um, of the entire report, uh, financial statements, and approved that. So ultimately, they're your statements, and you have the responsibility for them. Our responsibility gets into the next couple of paragraphs, if you perform an audit on those numbers, uh, in accordance with general accepted auditing standards. We've done that, and you'll find on page three, oh, I went too far, sorry. On page two, towards the top of the page, is our opinion. And I'm not gonna recite that whole paragraph to you, you can read it just as easy, or it's not better than actually, but it is a clean opinion. Uh, often qual, often qualified opinion is heard, um, it's the highest level of opinion that an audit firm can render on any of these financial statements. That's what you all, as members of the, uh, Board of Aldermen, would hope to get, uh, and expect to get, frankly. Uh, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to see if the city's finances, uh, and the operations of the city are, are doing, are going the way it's supposed to go, and that, um, that these numbers are fairly representative, and so, uh, we would commend you for that. But this, that opinion is one of your, at the end of the audit, after we, we bug the staff, and we look at documentation, we, we vouch to, to the invoices, we send confirmations out to bondholders, uh, the state of Missouri, uh, confirmation, review bank reconciliations, uh, gosh, perform a variety of analytical procedures and tests, uh, to get to the position that we can give that opinion. On page four and five, I would probably, not the majority, but several comments there. Think of number, on page four, as the balance sheet of the city. So these numbers are as of December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. And so, for instance, the very first line, it shows the cash, pooled cash and investments, and you can see it broken down between all the governmental activities versus the proprietary funds, the business-type activities, which is one of the two. And there's two lines for cash. The top line is the unrestricted portion, the second line is the restricted cash. First line, the unrestricted, that's available for day-to-day operations, paying bills, payroll and that type thing. Unrestricted, excuse me, restricted cash is set aside and designated for specific purposes. Uh, refunding, um, deposits, uh, pretty utility deposits. But mostly of that is to set aside monies to make sure that you have the funds on hand to pay your interest and principal on your debt. And there could be some other, uh, restricted monies in there, um, for police and so on. A court would have some restricted, uh, cash certainly. The other thing I wanna highlight, about halfway down the page, under liabilities, about eh, five or six lines.
Says long-term liabilities due within one year.
And citywide, you have just a little bit less than two point seven million dollars of principal on your bonds and debt that come due in two thousand nineteen. That, um, is, we're back up, so I don't want to keep going. Now, then go about three or four lines down and then due in more than one year. And then it says fourteen point two million dollars. That's two point six million dollars less than a year ago. And last year was two point five million dollars less than the year before that. What I'm saying is in spite of your growth, in spite of your continuing to do projects, um, to facilitate and attract that growth, debt keeps going down. That's a pretty good combination, uh, because on the next page, we're gonna talk about, uh, the tremendous increase in your property taxes, franchise taxes, sales taxes. And yet again, debt's going down, so good combination going on there. And you should be pleased with that. It doesn't just happen, you have to plan for it and then make it happen. On page five, this is kind of a funny looking statement frankly, uh, from an accountant standpoint. But what I really wanna highlight here is over on the, the third column from the left and then the middle column, the second column from the left, third line from the bottom, change in net position, the governmental funds, that's everything but water and sewer, had an increase of two point seven million dollars. Now, this is, this is not cash, but, but this is equity, if you will, I'll say it that way. Something maybe not quite right. And it was a positive eight hundred and forty-one, eight hundred and forty-one thousand. Both those numbers are better than a year ago, so consistent with the theme of the times I've met so far that, you know, revenues are, are strong, um, yes, expenses are going up, but not, I mean, you can't continue to provide services to an increasing population, uh, without something increasing, you know, you have to take in the infrastructure, uh, to support, uh, that. So, um, in that respect, it's a very good year. I would share with you that starting on page, uh, twenty, excuse me, seventeen through seventy-four, the majority of this package are the notes to the financial statements. And the, the types and quantities of the notes is dictated by general accepted characteristics of the city's office of interest. And, you know, so there's what, sixty pages in it? I just wanna highlight a couple of things that I think it would be of importance to you. On page thirty-six, this is information dealing with your long-term debt, what I was just talking about a while ago. And in particular, in the proprietary fund, look right here in the middle of the page, um, on page forty, I said thirty-six. That's thirty-six. I apologize. I wasn't meant to be on the panel. You can see that in for both the governmental funds and the business type funds, you can see the column retirements, how much has been paid. Now, you can also see the additions in the governmental funds, 'cause there was a refunding issue. But still, net-net, you, you use that significantly. Now, if you go over to page forty, where I was headed. In the middle of the page. Proprietary fund, as things stand right now, all of its debt will be paid in full in two thousand twenty. Pretty good situation to be in. Now, you may have projects on the drawing board that might change that, but nonetheless. Then on the bottom of page forty, and bleeding over to the top of forty-one, we talk a little bit about compliance. When the city borrows money, the underwriters, on behalf of the folks investing, buying your bonds or, or bank, if it's a specific, if it's a patient or whatever the case may be, they want some assurances that the money's gonna be there to pay their, to some principal back. And so, and among other things, it's to maintain insurance on the properties. And also, there's some financial, uh, covenants that you agree to. One is there on the bottom of page forty, that you will deposit certain amounts of monies into various restricted accounts, through their fund, revenue, uh, sinking fund, depreciation and replacement fund, and so on. And, um, if you don't, you would have a technical default. Um, but we're saying here that as is all of our testing, at the end of the year, the city was in compliance with all of its requirements. And so, certainly that's a good thing. The other thing that you agree to do when you have revenue bonds, you agree that you will set the rates sufficient to satisfy the, the bond covenant requirements. And you're gonna, um, I believe right now, uh, your, your percentage is a hundred and ten percent of the next year's debt service. And so, we calculate next year's debt service, take a look at the revenues available for paying that debt, and you satisfy that. And so, obviously, you know, a good thing. Uh, anybody wanting to invest in your funds, your bonds, you can, uh, but want those things to be in place. Those are the items that I wanted to highlight to you all as a result of the audit. And so, I guess at this time, I'll open it up for questions, um, that anybody might have, uh, members of the Board of Aldermen, mayor, Mr. Hunt.
I've talked to you all I want to this year, Butch. I love ya, but I've talked to you enough this year.
All right, questions?
I have a question concerning the supplement that came with the, with the thing. I guess my question is, what, what is the purpose of adjusting the general interest? And it's primarily focused on the water and sewer. Why was it focused on the water and sewer?
That schedule shows you we're required, uh, bear with me, I'll flip them back to the, that in my packet, too. We're required to show you all opposed adjustments that were agreed to, accepted, um, by management. Because again, in every year, financial statements. The reason that there would tend to be more entries in the water and sewer fund is because on the surface, you might not think so, but there's a lot more going on there. Not only necessarily in terms of providing services, but it has more restricted monies happening there. You've got depreciation, now there's depreciation in the general fund, too, but there's often a lot more moving parts in, in the fixed assets of the water and sewer fund, whether it's, you know, extending lines, whether it's replacing stuff that are, or, or an agreement with the city that you're buying water from. There's also, um, you have receivables, some pretty significant receivables from your customers that may, not always, but may, need adjustment. Um, it's just, it's just got a lot of, you know, you've got a lot of moving pieces there that don't, sometimes only occur once a year. And that's not uncommon for the auditing firm to propose those accrual type entries that only happen in effect at, at the year end. Um, so it does not mean that, um, it doesn't mean anything, uh, in terms of a reflection on the staff or, oh, gosh, we've got a lot of these entries, so is somebody not doing their job or not know what they're doing? And that's not the case at all, Mrs. West. Um, that's just the nature of the beast.
I haven't seen these in the past, this is the first time.
Okay.
I've had these adjustments, no. My, my second concern was operating revenue between the water and the sewer. I would think they would be very close to each other and they're not. And that's concerning and the operating expense for the water is significantly higher than it is for the sewer. So, I don't know if you can answer that question or if I basically need to talk to, you know, Ken or.
Which, you, you're on the page, what page are you on, Phil?
I'm on page forty-eight in the.
Thank you. And the operating revenues are lower in the water.
The water than the sewer, that doesn't make sense to me, but I guess there's an answer for that.
I think there is, but I, I, just standing here off the top of my head, I, I wouldn't wanna say.
That's what I'm saying, maybe I need to talk with.
I think that's right, I think that's it. You'll find that, uh, uh, Ryan or Stephen can address that. And, I mean, I could, when I get back to my work papers and I'd be glad to visit with them if I need to, but Ryan's tired of talking to me.
And I'm happy to, to visit more with you about it outside of this. I can tell you, one of the things that jumps out to, to me right now is an operating expense in water and sewer that, in water that we don't experience in sewer, uh, is, you know, over, uh, about a four to five million dollar water purchase. Uh, we don't have that purchase that occurs in sewer. So, we treat that, the purchase of all of our water is an operating expense. Um, now, on the sewer side, we have sewer, uh, transmission or sewer treatment, uh, payments that we make towards the treatment plant. But, um, it's mu- at a much lower rate than, than what our water actually costs us. So, it's just, literally just the difference between running a water, uh, utility and operating a sewer utility. But I'm happy to provide further numbers on those for you.
I would like a better understanding of that, because that was kinda shocking to me when I looked at those numbers.
Yeah, it's, it's a consistent trend, we'll, we always seem to, to have higher operating expenses in, in the water side, just because of our, uh, agreements that we have with Tri-County and Independence Water and the purchase of those. And then there's also, uh, treat, there's, there's debt service payments that we're making to Tri-County as part of that as well. So all those get lumped into operating services or operating expenses and makes it look higher than, than what you would expect.
I appreciate some.
Yes, ma'am.
Comment if you would.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll, and I'll, uh, I'll set up some time with you, Stephen and I, to go through that.
Any other questions?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For allowing us to serve as your auditor. Stephen, be ready, we're looking forward to next year already, so, but I'm confident it's gonna go well. Thank you all.
Thank you. Senior additional presentation for public hearings, move on to ordinances. God, remind me how to do this, uh, it's been like a month. We're gonna need a tutorial. On this new system.
So initially, Mayor, um, the, uh, tonight we'll have just the first reading. If you recall, the first go-round, we actually had first and second readings. Uh, so in this circumstance, uh, what we do, um, in order to bring a, a bill forward for, uh, a consideration, uh, is to, uh, to have a motion to make the first reading. And then, so there would be a motion, a second. And then the discussion on the matter would be the description of, of what's going on. And then the board would vote on that first motion. If it passes, then I would read, uh, read the ordinance title. And then, uh, and then there would be a motion, uh, after that to, uh, to accept that reading and then to bring the item forward at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
All right. I got it, I got the two separate, put it down, good.
You would, you would call for, uh, if, if there's a motion on the, on the bill.
Any motion for someone to bring up B nineteen dash sixteen?
Mayor, I move that we make the first reading by title only for bill B nineteen dash sixteen.
I have motion, Alderman, headley to bring forward B nineteen dash sixteen. I have a second.
Second.
Second on the west. Any discussion?
Where is this at?
Huh?
Where is this at?
Okay, well, right now, we're just, we're just bringing it up for discussion. Then you can ask questions, all right?
So the discussion at this point, uh, Mayor, I would, I would suggest that if staff has a report on this particular ordinance, that we would hear that report, um, and then, um, and then if there is any discussion from the Alderman on that, then you would take your vote on the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, this is the, uh, first read of the final plat of Risinger Hills, which is located, uh, down at the old Charlie's Road House location. Uh, this is the, uh, new, will be the new storage facility. Let, uh, Mr. Murphy add any additional comments or answer your questions if you have any. Should be noted that this passed, uh, planning and zoning recently, last meeting.
Uh, so, yeah, this is the, uh, actually, probably like an eight-month process now, 'cause this is the one where, if you remember, they requested a zone change, um, to allow for this, 'cause the only places convenient storage are allowed are C three and M one. Um, so the zoning was changed to C three, um, and then he applied for, the applicant applied for conditional use permit. So there's public hearings at the planning and zoning and Board of Aldermen meetings, um, where that was approved. Um, and then the preliminary plat, uh, went through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the final, uh, plat, uh, went to the Planning and Zoning Commission this past month and they recommended approval to the board.
I might add, Mayor, just to, to, uh, to refresh the board's memory, uh, the city has discretion to, to make certain requirements at the preliminary plat stage. And that essentially sets a check, you know, checklist for what needs to be accomplished. Once a developer has, has met all of those requirements, then we don't have any discretion. If they've checked all the boxes, then we have, we have to approve it. Our discretion at this point is whether they've actually checked the boxes. And I believe, uh, both Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this, as does, uh, staff.
All right. Someone has any discussion, take voice vote, right? Bring it back up. All fair, please say aye. All pose same sign.
Mayor, the motion passes five zero.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of bill B nineteen dash sixteen and bring it back for a second reading by title only at our next regular session.
Okay, I have motion, Alderman, headley to approve bill B nineteen dash sixteen for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only at the next meeting. I have a second. Second. Second on the stratton. Any discussion? And this one is, is this a voice vote?
Right.
Okay, then we'll call the second one.
Roll call will be next meeting.
Okay. All right, any additional discussion? Seeing that, all fair, please say aye. All pose the same sign. All right. Move on to resolutions, which are totally different. So. Resolution nineteen dash thirty, I'll entertain. Right, a motion to. For the resolution?
I make a motion.
Got motion on the west, a second. Second on the top.
It's her corner.
Discussion now, all right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, as you will recall, during the, uh, budgeting process, we went through, uh, and, and allocated funding for pedestrian crosswalk and adding signalized, uh, intersections or signalized crossings down, uh, at Main Street in, uh, Walnut downtown area. Um, if you have any questions specific to the project, Mr. Murphy can answer them or probably can give a better overview than I do.
Have any questions? Or she has some comments about them? You look like you want to talk about them.
No, I was just gonna say, so it's actually for two. There's one at, um, the board had decided to, yeah, do it at Front Street in Maine, um, and then at Walnut in Maine, um, 'cause we had budget time, couldn't really decide which one, uh, would be better suited. Um, we did get three quotes and actually it came in under what we originally had budgeted. Um, these will be solar units, so we're not gonna have to run, you know, power underground. So this is something that we're gonna be able to do, um, in-house. You'll notice that on the quote itself, it's a little bit lower than the actual price that we're recommending, that is the shipping cost that they've estimated. So that's the reason the two numbers don't match exactly.
Well, I'll tell you what, I know a lot of people that will appreciate it, because people do not stop for those signs.
They may not always stop for these either, you gotta make sure you pay attention to those also.
Oh, I know.
If that is to shoot the other one on, on Duncan, so. In fact, it's to shoot the other one on, on Duncan, so. But TV will be on it. If they're flashing, don't get them in the face. (laughing) They'll stop.
I know, that is.
You have any additional questions or discussion?
No. So, is it a, is it the light, a blinking light, or you push a button and the light comes on?
Yeah, so, they're, um, and the poles themselves are going to be, they're five-inch poles that are black and are going to look similar to, um, kind of the decorative streetlights that we have. But on each pole, so either side of the road, there'll be a button you can push. When you push that button, the lights will start flashing, um, and then there's a timer where they'll go off.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of that?
Um, it'll be us.
Oh, well, because I'm upset still with Greg and Frank. We have a streetlight, uh, new streetlight that isn't working.
So, if you have a streetlight concern, you can give that to us, and we'll send that over to KCPN.
It's KCPN, though.
So that, yeah, the streetlight.
Time to greet several months out of those.
Okay. All right. You know, my street's so dark, pathetic. There has been some concern voiced that, is that going to create some kind of a backlog right there by the railroad tracks, particularly the one on Front Street, the one on Walnut this time?
So, yeah, we had kind of looked at that, but, um, in reality, if those lights are flashing, you should be stopping prior to the railroad tracks. Um, so I, I mean, there's a lot of traffic on Main Street, but this is really the only option, um, you know, to give people a safer crossing, other than putting in a full, you know, signalized intersection.
That, I mean, we have a lot of trains right now that's needed sorely. Because of the fact that.
Yeah, of course, yeah, of course.
But yeah, I mean, so.
Was the, was the railroad track being so close right there, and wherever the light is going to be?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see that as being a issue, because like I said, if it's flashing, you should be stopping, uh, before you get to the railroad track. And it's not very long, I mean, it's, I don't know what the timing is off the top of my head, but it's just designed for you to be able to cross, so it's not going to be like, you know, a full stoplight or something that you would sit through. Yeah, exactly. I'll talk about that later.
No more to it.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, then. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign.
Motion passes five zero, Mayor.
Move on to resolution R nineteen dash thirty-one. Motion to.
Mayor, I move we accept R nineteen, R nineteen dash thirty-one as read.
I have most involved in heavily to approve resolution R nineteen dash thirty-one. I have a second.
Second.
Great, Oliver Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just a resolution to reappoint Ryan Bray, Norm Combs, and Terry Hill to the Park Board for three-year terms.
Just some questions? All right. Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign.
Motion passes five zero, Mayor.
Next item in is resolution R nineteen dash thirty-two.
Motion to approve. Yeah, I move we accept R nineteen dash thirty-two as read.
I have most involved in heavily to approve resolution R nineteen dash thirty-two. I have a second.
Oliver West.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, a resolution to appoint members to the IDA, Industrial Development, uh, Industrial Development Authority. Uh, in order to maintain the full membership, if you will see on the back page of the, the resolution, we have listed, uh, reappointments, Michael, uh, Mike Switzer, Justin Tyson, Kim Rome, Paul Wooton, and Daryl Jones. And then next to it, it says their, when their terms expire. Uh, this is a six-year term, and the idea with an IDA is that you have, uh, staggered terms so that you don't have complete turnover at one time with an IDA. Uh, other than that, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to help, or I'm happy to answer them, or, uh, Joe Lauber, our city attorney, can assist as well.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign.
Motion passes five zero, Mayor.
Next item, please, Charles.
Thank you, Mayor, just have one item for, uh, this evening. Uh, wanted to, uh, make, uh, the board and, and staff aware, uh, uh, I think many of you are, are aware that, uh, or all of you are aware, that in November this past year, a constitutional amendment was, uh, uh, adopted by the voters of Missouri to allow for medical marijuana, uh, in, uh, Missouri. And currently, the, the state of Missouri is working on regulations, uh, for that. In fact, they, uh, just last week began accepting applications, uh, for different, uh, uh, aspects of that, whether it be a grow facility, a dispensary, or for the applications for, uh, to become a qualified patient under the program. Um, this has caused, uh, uh, a lot of, um, activity on behalf of cities as we prepare, uh, to address this, this significant change in the law. And so, as a result, uh, our firm has decided that we're going to be putting on, uh, a, a seminar, uh, for cities. It's, uh, the impact of medical marijuana on cities. We're doing two locations. The closest location will be June twenty-eighth, uh, in, in Independence, at the Midwest Public Risk, uh, facility. And so, uh, it's, it's a Friday morning from, uh, eight-thirty to, uh, to noon, and, and we would, uh, invite members of, of the Board of Aldermen, members of staff, whoever needs to be there, uh, with respect to this. There are a lot of, uh, differing, uh, impacts, uh, to a city on this, and, and, um, this would cover a lot of the, the important issues that have to be addressed before we're in a situation where we have someone coming to exercise their new constitutional right.
All right. Mr. Murphy.
Uh, I had two things for you, um, Alderman West, you had mentioned the trains, um, so I'm sure some of you have probably, um, got some comments about increased train traffic, uh, here lately. Um, it kind of started last week, um, in the morning time, having all three, uh, crossings blocked. Uh, so we did reach out to Kansas City Southern today to try to get an explanation for that. Um, and what we got told was, um, Norfolk Southern, which is another rail line, basically, has lines that run parallel to Casey Southern that are not passable, um, starting in Mexico, Missouri. So they're actually on the Kansas City Southern lines right now. So where we used to see maybe four trains a day, now we're seeing eight. Um, and with that, the thought is maybe these newer train operators aren't aware of kind of the agreement we had worked out, that instead of this being the place where they stop, they stop prior to getting here. Um, so the gentleman that I spoke to at Kansas City Southern was going to reach out to those train operators and see if that can, um, maybe help some of our issues. Uh, but that is why there's more trains, is because of the flooding. So they were hoping within the next week to two that everything's back to normal and, um, the Norfolk Southern is off of their lines again. Uh, the second thing I had, just want to give you an update. We had the citywide cleanup event, um, which we had a ton of, uh, people come out for that. We actually filled up nine waste bins and two metal dumpsters. Um, so that's actually more than we had before, and, um, even last year, which is a record. So, we seem to keep setting new records, which meant the guys had to work a little longer on that Saturday, but, um, it went off well, and already getting ready for next year.
Just one more thing about the trains that Ken was mentioning. Hopefully, uh, all of you, or the majority of you, have seen the, uh, email that I forwarded about the, the complaint that, that I received about the trains. I just want to let you know that any time that we have a complaint about trains, or that the patrol notices that we have a train blockage down there, we do contact Casey Southern, uh, and let them know we've had an ongoing dialogue with their dispatch group and their management for s- over seven years now, um, since, well, actually since before I became the Assistant City Administrator. And, uh, while there's nothing we can do to force them off of, uh, off of our crossings, uh, the railroad has the highest level of brightway authority that, that can be given. It's, it's issued by the federal government. Uh, we do, uh, try to work in a cooperative spirit and nature, and, and so, as Ken was alluding to earlier with the, the trains through Mex- starting in Mexico, those tracks that are, that are flooded, um, this is the only place for trains to cross, uh, on the east side of Kansas City before they, they go into the Kansas City Terminal. So, we will continue to be mindful of that and, and make sure that, uh, while we can't force anybody's hand, we, we have been able to go a long ways with this kind of a spirit of cooperation, uh, and, and will continue to do so. Uh, Mrs. Ozenbaugh.
Mayor, members of the board, I have two events to either remind you or introduce you to. Um, we have our community development event coming up on June twentieth, so I think that's next Thursday, from five to seven PM. And so remember, this is the event that's held at Armstrong Park, and really is intended to highlight our Community Development Department, Public Works Division, things like that. So it's a great, family-friendly event, um, with food and games, and really a chance for the kiddos to interact with the equipment in some different ways. So, we hope you'll join us for that. Also coming up in July, I want to mark down, on the ninth and tenth, we'll be, um, showing our State of the City video, which there have kind of been leading our efforts on that, um, and why we had the camera crew here tonight. So, on the ninth, that will be shown at the partnership luncheon, and on the tenth, at the senior luncheon.
Teresa, what time's the start time for the community development event?
It starts at five o'clock, five to seven.
All right. Um, I had, uh, just, uh, one thing that I wanted to throw out there. I know that some of you have been waiting, uh, for quite a while for devices. Uh, Alderman Shay got, got one of his, because we actually had it in stock. We have ordered the devices, we received the keyboards, and you will be receiving them. We should be receiving them on, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday. So, just anybody that's waiting for a device, it is on its way, um, and you will get it. Uh, and someday is almost here. Uh, with that, I do believe that, uh, City Clerk Jamie Logan has, uh, some guidelines that she was going to have signed, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Logan?
Each of you up here have the elected official operating guidelines for you to sign. So if you take a look at those, sign them, I can put a signed copy back in your mailbox after you guys have a chance to look at them.
Just as a reflection, or as a reminder, that is the, uh, guidelines, uh, that the board recently agreed and, uh, authorized, uh, kind of your own way of policing, uh, the, the elected official position. Um, other than that, I have nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next up is the Board of Aldermen reports and comments. Oliver Stratton?
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
Oliver Totten?
Nothing to report.
Oliver Bass?
Nothing to report.
Robert Headley?
Um, just want to say thanks to Ken and everyone else that was involved in the, uh, the drainage issue that was brought up earlier. I know there's a lot of work that's going into that, um, and then just spending time on the phone with me, uh, helping deal with that and a couple other things that I've gotten calls about, so appreciate, appreciate your time, Ken.
Oliver West?
Nothing at this time.
Next up, Mayor's report, I have a couple things. First off is, uh, Alderman Board liaison. Looks like everyone has got those in, and we'll be looking at, uh, Alderman Headley, you'll be doing planning and zoning. Oliver Stratton.
Park board.
And Alderman Cleaver's in his school. Alderman Bass, they're going to do the transportation community development. Uh, Alderman Headley's Austin Air Pro-Tim, and then Alderman West is the small business liaison for the partnership. Oliver Totten, I don't know what to do with you.
I'm doing.
I'm going to, no, I'm going to, I'm going to make it, but you, you are going to be the, uh, new crosswalk observer. You're going to be in charge of letting us know if the crosswalks are not you, working.
I'm already, uh.
I, I know, you do funny, you, yeah. Those crosswalks, those crosswalks.
I had to help a lady with a small child, and I'm going to tell you something.
What, across the street?
Yes, and they were in the walkway, and the people didn't stop, and you were, ooh. You know how close I can be. He got past a little bit and then stopped, and I said, "Did you see that sign?" If I ever get tarred and feathered, you know why.
All right, uh, and the next item I have is the, uh, right by Banny Parents Association is going to be having a, their annual barbecue at Armstrong Park on July nineteenth, and they are requesting, uh, permission to be able to sell, uh, uh, merchandise, like, uh, sweatshirts and shirts and such. And we currently have an organization placed where you're not supposed to sell things in the park unless the Board of Aldermen waives that for them, so. They are requesting that we waive that, so they're able to sell their items for their fundraising. Uh, this should is, so. Yes.
Do they collect so much?
Yeah.
Do they collect so much?
Probably not.
Five one two three, not, yeah, I doubt it if they're five one two three.
It should be five one two three, yeah, they prob- they shouldn't, they're five one two three, be my guess. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, I'm most involved in heavily, I have a second.
Second.
Oliver Totten, any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. I don't have to, like, bring that up three times, do I, Joe? Okay. You want to contact her, let her know that they are good to go? I don't see a phone number on there, so I don't know. Uh, that is all I have in my report. Uh, we have a need for an executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a need under section twelve and one, is that correct, Joe?
Twelve and one. All right, I will retain the motion into adjournment to executive session. Question for Oliver Headley. Second, Oliver Stratton. Any discussion? All right. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same sign. All right. Oliver Totten?
Yes.
Oliver Bass? Oliver Headley?
Yes.
Oliver West? All right, adjourned to executive session.